Mr. Weaver, will you lead us in the flag salute?
Please join with me in our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. Henry Morgenthau, when writing his memoirs of his years, he served as the United States Ambassador to the Ottoman Empire, said the following: "I am confident that the whole history of the human race contains no such horrible episode as this. The great massacres and persecutions of the past seem almost insignificant when compared to the sufferings of the Armenian race in 1915. We pray for the memory of those who perished at the hands of the Ottoman Turkish Empire in their planned extermination of the Armenian nation, whereupon a government uprooted an indigenous population under the cover of the First World War massacred and deported hundreds of thousands. As countless Americans around the country gather to mark the 95th anniversary of the Armenian genocide, let us take this opportunity to remember the virtue of justice and the gift of life. Let us join with those who remember and pray for the fallen and the restless souls of the victims of this crime. May the souls of the parish rest in peace on at least one day when we collectively remember their suffering, and implore our nation's leaders to learn the lessons of the past so that no other people should suffer a similar fate. We pray for peace always. Amen."
Can we have your report, please?
The agenda for the April 20th, 2010, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, April 15th, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. The next item?
At 3:00, under Presentation and Appointments, at 3:00 A is the Agenda Preview for the Meetings of April 27th, 2010.
Thank you, Mr. McFaul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week, on April 27th, we'll begin in the morning at 10 o'clock with a special budget -- actually, this will be on Monday instead of Tuesday, so we'll have a special meeting. This will be a citywide budget study session, at which time we'll be continuing with the CIP, but we'll have presentations by designated city departments. On Tuesday, the 27th, there won't be a specific Housing Authority meeting. We will begin with the Redevelopment Agency, which will have one business item. This is a report from the Director of Community Development and Housing regarding the ARC Installation Program. That evening, on the Glendale City Council Agenda, starting at 6 o'clock, there will be two action items. The first, a report from the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding the proposed amendments to Chapter 13.04 and 13.28 of the Glendale Municipal Code Regarding Recycled Water Waste. Then next will also be a report from the Glendale General Manager of Glendale Water and Power. This is a Wireless Communication Facility Month Rental Agreement for the rental of a portion of city-owned property located at 827 Airway. That will be it for next week.
Thank you. Let's move to 3B.
3B is Presentation by Senator Carol Lou to Councilmember Quintero.
Mr. Bogosian.
Hello, my name is Harald Bogosian, and I'm from Senator Carol Lou's District Office. I'm here on behalf of the Senator to present the certificate of recognition to former Mayor Frank Quintero for his outstanding dedication to the City of Glendale as Mayor. I would also like to welcome Aron Najarian as Mayor of Glendale.
Mr. Quintero. We appreciate the Senator's attention to our fair city and hope to continue to work with her in the months ahead. Thank you, Mr. Bogosian. Let's go to the next item, please.
At 3C is a reappointment of Mr. Don Minsey to the Glendale Housing Authority.
Okay.
3C, that's --
We have a motion on second. Any discussion? On Mr. Minsey's behalf, he's certainly a -- of course, he is the senior Section 8 recipient who, by statute, has a place at the dais with the Housing Authority. He's been -- makes every meeting and makes very relevant and pertinent comments during our discussions. He's doing a great job. So if there's nothing else, let's take roll call.
Councilmembers, Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda at 4 is --
Just a moment.
I'd like to, I guess we'd vote on it next week, reappoint Sam Manukian to the Civil Service Commission.
Okay, we'll place him on the agenda for reappointment. Okay, Mr. Kusakian.
Item 4, City Council and Staff Comments.
Comments? Staff, council?
Yes.
Mr. Draymond?
Couple of things, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to know if I could inquire from Mr. Hagani over there about where we are with the issue in the 1700 block of Hillside Drive. The individual who had removed his front lawn entirely, hired a contractor to put in artificial turf, and then apparently was stopped by the city, in the meantime, has piled up all the vegetation on his lawn, and now the rest of the neighbors in the block are treated to not only no landscaping, but a pile of dead vegetation in front lawn.
Yes, we followed up on that information. Neighborhood Services sent someone out there. In fact, the dead vegetation is mulch that the Public Works provided for the address because they had removed the top soil, and the sycamore trees were in danger, so the mulches hoped to save the sycamore trees. If they used the mulch, they could meet the landscaping requirement. We're not issuing any permits for artificial turf because that's not permitted in our code as yet. So that's really the latest information. So we did check on that.
So the question is, are they using the mulch for that, or is it just being left in a giant mound?
The latest we learned was that it was left in a giant mound, and we sent staff out there to encourage the resident to, in fact, use the mulch that was provided for them to save the sycamore trees.
Well, and what is our next move, assuming that that doesn't happen, since that hasn't happened yet?
The next move would be we would consult with the City Attorney's Office to see what legal actions we could take.
Okay, and last question, Mr. Hagani, what's the timeline on that?
Well, this week. I actually have been exchanging emails with our staff and Neighborhood Services, so tomorrow is the next visit, so they're on visit every day this week, so they're going to be visited again tomorrow.
Okay. My point, Mr. Mayor, in all of this is that it is not just about our ordinances, it's also about, we talk about quality of life in this city, it is also what some of this does to the neighbors, to have an eyesore like that. To me, this is no different than someone with a construction project that leaves a porta potty in their front yard or their driveway for a year while they have an ongoing project that's just languishing, and the rest of the neighborhood is treated to that every birthday, every Christmas, every family event, but they have to drive past that. So that's why I am making such an issue of it, and the fact that we should be staying on the timeline, and that's just doesn't drag on and on and on for the neighbors. The second thing, Mr. Mayor, was an issue that several people, several residents in the Montecito Park, your neighborhood, actually, have raised with me related to the traffic on North Verdugo Road, Mr. Zern. As you travel southbound on North Verdugo Road at the intersection with Elsino Drive, I guess it is, if you're turning left onto Elsino to enter Montecito Park at that point, what you see facing you is a left turn bay for northbound traffic. Problem is that because of the cars loading up in that left turn bay for the northbound traffic, the southbound traffic turning left can't see the oncoming traffic at all. And so the question is, what can be done, whether it's a stop sign or something to compel, somehow control traffic so that left turn automobiles headed southbound on Verdugo at Elsino can make a left turn and still be able to see the oncoming traffic?
We will look into that, Mr. Draymond.
Thank you. And then lastly, Mr. Zern, I was curious about how we are with Emerald Isle and that issue.
All of the data, Mr. Draymond, all of the data that we had collected, including traffic counts, camera, video, the police did enforcement and made observations, has all been completed, and we are meeting, I believe it is Monday, with Public Works and the Police Department go over what the findings were and then begin to look at the options for us to try to address these things.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You're referring to the speeding, complaints of speeding, that?
Well, the speeding and basically the, yeah, the failure to stop at all the different stop signs there, the rolling stops and so on. This has been one of the areas where we get continual complaints from the residents.
Okay. I just have one comment and just a brief update on the 710 Tunnel. The 710 Tunnel was slated to come to the MTA Board this week. I thought I would be, I thought I would be cute and remove the item from the agenda in my authority as Chair. Unfortunately, someone counter-moved and went behind and put the item back on the agenda. So as a result, this Thursday, the item of the 710 Tunnel will be coming to the MTA Board. In particular, the motion eliminates all other tunnel routes except for the one that goes under South Pass and surfaces at the 210-134 near the Rose Bowl. It also directs the MTA to immediately take steps to perform the EIR for that tunnel. So this thing is really moving along. We are, those who are opposed to the tunnel, several of us on the Board are doing everything we can to make sure that that does not go forward. At the very least, we're entitled to a analysis as to the cost benefit of the tunnel, an analysis as to the health hazards posed by the tunnel, and an analysis as to the financial feasibility of the tunnel. It makes no sense to spend tens, if not hundreds, of millions doing an EIR only to find out that no one's going to use it, and it's going to be too expensive to build, and/or/that when it is built, it's going to create intolerable levels of pollution for the neighborhoods. So stay posted. We haven't counted votes. Last time we voted on it, though, the 710 Tunnel did advance. We have support from Adam Schiff to slow down and perform those studies, those additional studies, so we can make an informed decision as to whether a tunnel at any route configuration is the best way to alleviate the traffic problems in that area. So we are at a critical junction. Stay tuned, I'm sure it'll be widely publicized whichever way the Board votes. Any other comments? Okay, let's move on. Mr. Kusakian?
Item 5, under Consent, the following is a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
I don't have any cards. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved. Second.
Okay. There's no discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item would be Oral Communications.
And as we have done in the past, we are taking priority cards for those people who wish to make public announcements for either a public event or a matter of general public interest, and those comments will be limited to three minutes. The first card is from John Colbert, followed by Leon Mayer. Yes, come forward, please.
Hi, my name is John Colbert, the C O L B E R T, and Mayor Najarian and councilmembers, thank you very much for giving me just a few moments this evening to discuss the event on Friday at the Alex Theater at 7:30 PM commemorating the Armenian genocide. Many tragic events have occurred in human history, and the worst of which have been when humans have engaged in the horrific act of exterminating God's people to suit their own cause. We must never forget the very recent indescribable suffering and pain of the Armenian people during the deportation by the Ottoman Turkish Empire from 1915 to 1923, wherein one and a half million Armenian men, women, and children were massacred. Remembering this horrific act is not a responsibility left solely to the Armenian people, it is a responsibility of all people who love peace and prosperity to recognize, learn from, and remember this and other such terrible acts so that we can move forward as a better people. Today, I extend my most kind and sincere wishes to all Armenians and encourage everybody's attendance at Friday's event at the Alex Theater and/or at any one of the other several events upcoming to commemorate the Armenian genocide. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if you will yield, I have a request for priority from Mr. Bogosian. He has to get on to official business after this.
Thank you. Again, my name is Harald Bogosian, and I'm from Senator Carol Lou's District Office. I have three announcements to make. First, the Senator will be hosting her 11th Annual Woman in Business Awards Luncheon on Friday, July 16th, at the Pasadena Hilton Hotel. Nomination forms for this event are due Friday, April 23rd. I have extra nomination forms for those who are interested. Second, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and the Senator will be partnering with the Glendale Commission on the Status of Women to present free self-defense classes for women and girls tomorrow, April 21st, 6:00 to 8:30 PM. And finally, the Senator's office will be hosting a workshop on EDD, Unemployment Insurance, on May 8, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the Verdugo Workforce Center here in Glendale. Thank you. I have flyers for all three events.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the council, staff. My name is Leon Mayer, and I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Public Library and, of course, Friends to the Library. We have three events I'm going to talk about tonight. The first event is the, for the old timers who remember the Big Band era, we're going to have John Tupac, John Tumpac, rather, is a jazz historian, and he's written a book called, When Swing Was a Thing: The Personality Profiles of the Big Band Era. And he has a great book with a lot of pictures of the old timers, and that event is on April 29th, Thursday, at 7:00. Everybody's invited. The next event is May 5th, a Wednesday, at Central Library Auditorium. Gil Garcetti will be here to talk about his new book, Paris, Women, and Bicycles. And Mr. Garcetti spent, I think, three years in Paris, and that's probably a nice place to spend for three years if you can look at bicycles and women, and he's written a book about it. And he's the former District Attorney of LA County some years ago, and he will be here to sell his books and show his pictures, and that should be an interesting event. And there's going to be one of the area's big bicycle organizations, they're going to be here next week to talk more about it and talk more about this particular event. But the major event, I want to reiterate, is coming on May 10th. Do we have that up on the screen? Not yet. Anyway, on May 10th, we're having Father Gregory Boyle talk about his book Tattoos on the Heart: The Power of Boundless Compassion. And he's a father, Roman Catholic priest, who for 20 years worked in East Los Angeles with gang intervention programs there. He organized the Home Bodies, or the Homeboys, rather, an organization that was involved with gang intervention and youth at risk programs. He's done a tremendous job. He's known nationally. He's going to be here at the library to talk about his book and talk about anything else he wants to talk about, and that'll be May 10th at 7:00 at the Glendale Library. That's a Monday. So we'll look forward to seeing everybody there, and I'll be back again to give us some more details. And I have the flyers, and I have the Friends monthly letters, and I always have things in my pockets about the library that are of interest to everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alina Meradian?
Hi, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity. I would like to just join everybody for the April 24th, along with all the organizations that are doing the commemoration of April 24th, the Armenian genocide, but on behalf of Royal Gallery in Glendale at Express Art Center at 1418 West Glen Oaks in Glendale, California, we're doing an event, it's mostly an international event, not just for the Armenian genocide, but I'll actually read out the description. "A select group of artists will gather to let out a solid voice of extreme opposition against all genocides and mass murders towards humankind because of their race, nationality, or religious and personal beliefs." And I would like to invite everybody here and, of course, for the City of Glendale to join us to actually, to oppose any future actions of this extreme opposition. And I brought also postcards and catalogs, which I'll leave here.
Address?
1418 West Glen Oaks, Glendale, California, 91201. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards, so I will close Oral Communications, but I would like to correct an error of omission that I made, and that is to remind everyone of the Mans in Humanity to Man event that we have coming up on Thursday night at the Glendale Central Library at 7:00 PM, and that will be an evening of discussion. There'll be a panel discussion, and the topic will be modern-day slavery. That starts at 7:00. It's at the Central Library. Parking is across the street in the Marketplace Garage. I think it's two hours free or 90 minutes free parking. And then the following evening, as Mr. Colbert mentioned, the city will have its Armenian Genocide Memorial Event at 7:00 PM at the Alex. Admission is free, but you have to obtain tickets from the Alex Theater box office, and you can obtain up to four tickets per person. The doors will open at 6:15. It should be another great event involving performances, stage performances, theatrical performances, music, singing, and our keynote speaker is Robert Papazian. It should be a very good event that starts at 7:00, and it should last for about a half, hour and a half. And immediately after that is a prayer vigil at the Civic Auditorium parking lot sponsored by the Unified Young Armenians. And everyone is invited to both of those, actually, all three of those events, they are all without charge, and it should go a long way in memorializing and commemorating both Mans in Humanity to Man and the Armenian genocide. Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Kusakian, what's next?
Moving on to action items, at 8A is Fire Chief Regarding Fire Department Burn Building. At 8A1 is a resolution appropriating $150,000.
Fire Department needs a new building to burn and practice life safety operations and fire suppression.
Yes.
And we make it out of concrete, but the current building has just seen too many fires and is starting to --
Yes, way too many. We haven't used it for a couple of years now, so it's been out of service.
Okay, very good. If there's any --
No, this is not a new building, this is reinforcing the existing building.
Reinforcing the existing building.
Right. At our training center at 541 West Chevy Chase is where we do our training, and we have a recruit academy going on currently. And one of the key components to the training is putting our people in live fire training situations in a controlled environment. This was our building that we've done this with for many, many years, and the building has just been out of service for a few years, so we haven't been able to put any of our existing people or our new recruits through any live fire training in a controlled environment. So the work to be done here, we'll put that building back in service, and then we'll be able to take our fire crews and put them in different situations that they would face out in the community in a controlled environment.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Draymond?
No, I was just going to move the item at 8A1.
I was just going to second it.
Okay, let's take roll call.
So you are moving in second.
Yes, not only was I going to, I did. Okay.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
At 8B is Fire Chief Regarding Provision of Dispatch Center Medical Director Services to the Verdugo Fire Communications Center. At B1 is a resolution approving professional service agreement with Dr. Edmund Sinol. And a D.
Okay. We need a doctor available to dispatch to assist our firefighters and paramedics in any medical situation that may result.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, and just to give you a brief on this one, as you all remember, back in January, Verdugo Dispatch started engaging in what's called tier dispatching. And tier dispatching is basically dispatching the right resource to the call, which means if it's an ALS call, we'll send the paramedic unit with the firefighters. A BLS call, you get EMTs with the firefighters. Well, to provide that oversight to the dispatch center, we have to have the direction of a medical director. We've talked to the other medical directors for our partner agencies in Verdugo, Pasadena, and Burbank. Their medical director showed no interest. Our medical director has been assisting Verdugo over the years, and so it was a real unnatural fit for him to come and assist us in this need for the dispatch center. So not just Glendale, but Glendale, Burbank, Pasadena, plus the nine contracting agencies also.
Very good. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I would second it.
And you do?
I do.
Thanks.
And if there's no questions or comments, roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes. Next item.
At 8C is Fire Chief Regarding Providing Contract Fire and EMS Dispatching Services to the City of Arcadia. At C1 is a resolution authorizing City Manager to execute the Verdugo Fire Communications Services Agreement with the City of Arcadia.
Chief?
Just to give you a quick brief on this one, it was about a year and a half ago that Glendale Burbank and Pasadena renewed its agreement to manage the Verdugo Dispatching Center, and one of the things that we pledged to do was to try to equalize our contracting agencies' rates. This is the first step in that process. The City of Arcadia, we've met with them, and we've agreed on the current cost per call for dispatching to institute a new agreement with Arcadia, and we'll be coming back to you as we reengage the other eight agencies in new contracts. And the goal, once again, is to equalize the rates. Over the years, the rates have started to get pretty far apart, and we've also instituted the cost allocation to Verdugo, which was a key component, because now all of our accounting for the dispatch center is being charged out to the users of the system, and the City of Glendale is not paying for those additional costs that it took to run the center. So this is the first of many new agreements.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Let's take roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
At 8D is Fire Chief Regarding Proposed Purchase of a Fire Training Structure. At D1 is resolution authorizing to issue a purchase order to Fire Training Structures LLC to furnish and install certain fire training structures as a sole source.
Chief?
Just to give you a brief on the last item that we have on the agenda for tonight, as you may know, over the past couple of years, we have been acquiring props at our regional training site at the top of Show Canyon at the landfill, and this is a special training facility to maintain our competencies in our USAR and hazmat programs. In order for our firefighters to be what's termed as a USAR specialist or hazardous material specialist, there's a series of special training classes that they have to take. In order to save the community money, we've applied for grant funds over the years, and we've received those grant funds to put many different training props up at the regional training site. Now we're at the tail end of this project, and we need some infrastructure needs up at that site, and this is what that's for, at the top of Show Canyon landfill.
Okay. Any questions?
I'd like to move 8D1.
Do you? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes. Next item.
Next item is not the Fire Chief, actually, it's Director of Public Works at 8E Regarding Status Report on Waste Conversion Technology. E1 is motion authorizing City Manager to assemble a project team to research, analyze, report, and recommend a waste conversion project for the City of Glendale. At E2 is a resolution appropriating $200,000.
Mr. Starburt?
Yes, I'll go to Steve Zern, Director of Public Works, not the Fire Chief.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I always wished I was the Fire Chief, but, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it gives me a great pleasure to be back before you tonight to talk more about the whole concept of waste conversion technology and our efforts to look at alternatives to disposing of our waste in the landfill. Not only that, looking what our long-term goals are going to be. We are lucky to have a landfill, it's a great asset, however, we know it's a finite asset, and we need to be looking at where we're going in the next 20, 30, 40, 50 years. in the next twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. The alternatives that are out there right now, one of the big ones, one of the biggest ones is waste by rail, and I don't think any of us are really enamored with that type of technology, not to mention the cost it would put, the financial burden it would put on both the city and our residents. So back in two thousand and seven, I made the initial presentation to you all, well, most of you, regarding waste conversion technology to get your input and see if you were supportive of that. At that time, Mr. Kobe Sky from Los Angeles County Public Works Department, who's done tremendous work in this area, made a presentation to give background in some of the details of what they were doing. Back then, they were in phase, I believe they had finished phase one, going to phase two. They just this morning received approval to do phase three and four, so they're moving rapidly. At that time, council was very much in favor of us pursuing this, in fact, asking us and directing us to continue to work with the county in developing this type of technology and even offering our city Shoal Canyon as a potential pilot program site. The county, again this morning, Public Works received approval from the board to not only go in their phase three and four, they also received approval to have three companies put together pilot projects for the greater L.A. County area. Mr. Sky is here again with us tonight because I think it's important. He has an extremely good presentation and has done just tremendous work. It's probably been five or more years that they have been working on this, and this is visiting sites abroad, putting together RFPs, interviewing firms. They shortlisted their potential developer firms down to five, and we've had an opportunity to talk to at least one of them. But they've done a tremendous amount of work. Mr. Sky's presentation gives you some background on the issues, some specifics on what the county's doing, and some of the things that we need to address in the future, mainly right now. And immediate, our immediate need is to get some legislation lined up that will make it easier for us to do this. It actually, right now, the conversion technology would not allow us to have this counted as a diversion under AB nine thirty-nine. Secondly, the potential energy that could be produced from any one of these conversion technology projects or methods would not be considered clean energy and thus not be attributable to GWP's renewable portfolio standard. So that is one of the first things we have to do, is to attack that legislation. The county has been out in front on that. We've been supportive. As the City of Glendale, I have been very active in that. We received some good news yesterday as the Energy Commission and some other boards at the state level have put together their letter of support for AB two-two-two. It's called. That's the real critical piece for us right now. And we'll continue to engage our lobbyist firms to assist us with that, and we may need your assistance as well. But generally speaking, again, our long-term goal is to look, how are you going to supply our residents or provide our residents with an efficient, cost-effective means of disposing of waste, and to do it in an environmentally sensitive manner? And those are not mutually inclusive, or exclusive, I should say. They can be put together, and we can get a project going like this. I will tell you, a project of this magnitude for something comparable to what we do at the landfill is very, very large, both financially and from a construction and operation standpoint. One of the firms that was shortlisted by the county, who in talking to us, gave us a bit of a pro forma, excuse me, regarding a facility up at Shoal that would be able to process generally the amount of waste that we generate now, which is fifteen to seventeen hundred tons. That's in good times. We're not doing that now by any means. But just to give you an order of magnitude, a facility like that would cost somewhere around seven hundred and fifty million dollars to build and another thirty million a year to operate. So this is a very complex project. You can imagine the different funding sources and funding options and contractual agreements we have to come do to bring this to fruition, certainly a public-private partnership. But I can talk a little bit more about that when I follow up on Kobe. I would like him to come up, if he would, and give you his presentation. He has a PowerPoint. I hadn't had a chance to talk to him, but I think he understands that we need to move through that PowerPoint as quickly as possible. Mr. Sky is probably the subject expert right now on this particular technology in this area. He's done great work. He is in the Environmental Programs Division within the Los Angeles County Public Works Department. And without further ado, Kobe?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for having me, mayor and members of the city council. I'll make sure, it looks like I'm already running through my PowerPoint very quickly. Yeah. I do want to thank Steve for all the work that he's done in partnering with us on this effort. We're very excited about getting approval from our Board of Supervisors, and I want to say that I'm grateful to see that the County of Los Angeles and the City of Glendale are very much in sync. We're having an item on conversion technologies on the same day. We also had a very moving presentation about the Armenian genocide and the need to recognize that at the board meeting today. So I'm hoping that this is something that will resonate with all of you as well in terms of the need to do something different with our trash. So on the first slide, I'll just go through the information very quickly. Just a very brief background. L.A. County, we have over ten million residents. We generate a tremendous amount of trash. The county's responsibility is to make sure that on a fifteen-year planning basis, we have somewhere to manage that trash. And so we've been looking at all of the different options available, and one of the approaches that we're taking is to develop these new technologies for managing this material. We're also continuing to manage our world-renowned recycling and waste reduction programs as a way to reduce the amount of waste that we need to send to disposal. We're actively pursuing disposal capacity wherever we can, and our third and final option is to develop these new technologies. And I'll jump a couple more slides down. This just talks about our triple approach to managing the material. The next slide is really what I'm here to talk about, which is conversion technologies. When we talk about this term, and it's one that we created to describe essentially a variety of technologies, and the commonality between them is that they can take trash, turn it into fuel, energy, and products in a way that's clean and that doesn't combust the waste. So there's a diverse array of technologies out there that can accomplish that. There's biological technologies, thermochemical combinations of technologies, over probably a dozen categories of technologies. And one of the projects that I've been overseeing over the last five years is to evaluate these technologies and identify the ones that are most promising to bring to Los Angeles County. Next slide. There's a number of benefits of conversion technologies that we've found in addition to being able to manage our waste. The first is to reduce disposal and recover additional resources that would otherwise be lost to a landfill. So much as we recycle, there's always some materials in the trash that could be recycled that we're not recycling currently. Next benefit is improving our air quality, and there's actually three benefits that we get from just managing our waste through conversion rather than sending it to a landfill. We're reducing our disposal of trash, which is a major benefit. He was talking about our waste by rail system, and there's other proposals on the table, but essentially, as our landfills within L.A. County close, we need to ship our waste farther and farther away. That's going to increase our emissions. If we develop these facilities locally, as we're proposing to do, we reduce those emissions. We also eliminate the emissions from the landfill itself, and we're producing clean renewable energy, much cleaner than our current mix of electricity on our grid. Next benefit is producing biofuels and promoting energy independence. It's a great way, ninety-nine percent of our ethanol, for example, is imported from outside of the state of California. These technologies can produce ethanol from waste, materials that are already generated in our households right now, and we can be making something productive and beneficial from it. And finally, creating green collar jobs. This is a very important issue for us right now, and we're just starting to recover from the economic crisis, and the more jobs we can create, the more quickly we can recover from it. And the next slide. These are the four shortlisted companies that Steve was referring to earlier. As you click through, we'll show just a brief visual of each of the technologies. We have anaerobic digestion. That's an Aero Ecology is a company that is developing that particular technology. IES is a pyrolysis technology. It's a thermal technology. Interstate Waste and Intech Renewable Energy Solutions. These are all thermal technologies that can take that waste material and produce a fuel from it. On the next slide, and these are just visuals of each of the facilities that we visited to verify the information from the company. We've also identified three locations for demonstration projects. Those are the ones that are part of phase three, as approved by our Board of Supervisors this morning. We'll be testing and verifying the performance standards that we expect to see from these companies through these demonstration projects. These are smaller scale of about two to three hundred tons per day, to give you a sense of the size. When we move to larger projects in L.A. County, we would expect closer to a thousand tons per day or more for commercial-scale projects, once we learn from these demonstration projects. On the next slide, our approach to developing projects, and this is true both for commercial and the demonstration projects, is to develop partnerships where everyone is bringing something to the table. We've identified material recovery facilities that are willing to host these sites, these projects. They provide not only the land for the project, but also the feedstock, which is trash that would otherwise be going to a landfill. So for the recycling facility, it's a benefit in that they don't have to pay to transport and dispose that trash. For the conversion technology company, it's a benefit in that they're receiving the material and have a site for their project. And our role is really to facilitate the development of the project, bringing the partners together, making sure that these are the best technologies, that they meet the most stringent air emission standards and environmental standards that we have here in Southern California. Next slide. Kind of covered this topic, so we'll jump to the next slide. Go ahead. The opportunity for communities, and this is where a partnership with Glendale will be important. We really have an opportunity for capital project that would bring in some of these companies to develop a project locally, create employment and job opportunities, and localize our waste management, make sure that you continue to have for the indefinite future a way to manage your waste locally, produce renewable energy. This is a great way to ensure that you produce potentially enough power to supply a significant portion of the homes in your city and meeting other state goals. Go ahead. Our project timeline, as was mentioned, this year will be embarking on a parallel track both phases three and four. The demonstration projects obviously are farther along. We've already identified the technologies and the sites. On a staggered basis, we'll also begin the process to identify technologies and sites for phase four, which are projects within Los Angeles County. As we move forward with our demonstration projects, we're completing the permitting, the design, the construction of those demonstration projects. We'll be learning very valuable and important lessons that we hope to apply immediately to these commercial projects that we're looking to partner with L.A. County jurisdictions to develop. Next slide. The main obstacles to the development of projects for many years has been, and to some extent continues to be, three major hurdles. Cost is one issue. Most of these new technologies do have initially a higher cost than our landfill costs. As we see landfills closing in the basin, we're going to see much higher tipping fees. Just to give you an idea, we're projecting that within five to ten years, the cost for waste by rail will be approaching a hundred dollars a ton, much more expensive than our current landfill rates. That is going to increase the prevailing rates for landfills in the area, and so we're going to see our trash rates increase, and these technologies are then going to become cost-effective directly with traditional disposal. We've also been overcoming misconceptions about these technologies. There's been some folks in the environmental community that confuse these technologies with the traditional older incinerators. First of all, even current incinerators aren't old incinerators. They're tremendously cleaner, ninety-nine percent or more cleaner than the ones that we were seeing developed in the eighties and seventies. That being said, these new technologies are orders of magnitude cleaner than even the best incinerators, and the reason is that they're not combusting the waste and then trying to clean up all of the emissions that are generated. Instead, they're breaking down the bonds within the waste materials and separating out the different products in order to reform them into useful products. And so by doing that, they can be much cleaner. All of the technologies we're looking at are fully enclosed. The only emissions that would be generated is if you had energy production on site from the fuel that's being produced. If not, then they can literally be zero emission technologies. And the last step is what Steve was mentioning with regards to Assembly Bill two-two-two and the reason why the county is supporting its passage this year. There are significant regulatory hurdles that are currently in the way of the development of conversion technology projects. And so what we hope to do is overcome those regulatory hurdles that primarily are there in state statute because these new technologies weren't considered when the laws were passed twenty years ago or more. So with that, next slide. In conclusion, we believe, and our board has been supportive, of moving in a new direction for solid waste management. We have conversion technologies that can essentially take what's now a liability, trash collection that we have to pay to dispose, we have to pay to manage those landfills, and in the long term, they're a liability to us. We can now turn that waste into a resource that can provide us with renewable energy, help us clean the air, and produce green collar jobs. With that, a final slide is our my contact info and our website for additional information, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Sky and Ms. Friedman?
Thank you. First, thank you for coming. Good to see you here. I have, I guess, two questions. The first is, this seems to really fit in very well with what the Obama administration is trying to do in terms of energy. Is there stimulus money that can help us with this?
That's a great question, and one of the two aspects of what our Board of Supervisors adopted this morning is approval of a contract with an environmental consultant, Alternative Resources, and they have a subcontractor whose focus is going to be primarily trying to procure sources of grant funding to help us with these types of projects, and the stimulus funds are a major source of that. One of the four companies that are on our shortlist have also been independently pursuing the stimulus funds. They believe that they would be able to get a thirty percent grant towards the construction cost of the facility through the stimulus project, and that would obviously be a major incentive in reducing the initial tipping fees for the project.
Actually, I have a few questions. My next question is, what is the analysis about the startup costs and the operational costs versus whatever profit could be made by selling the energy?
Well, there's a lot of different variables involved in developing a pricing model. One of them would be whether the city would be owning the facility or simply creating a lease agreement or some other agreement for waste management with the particular company. Also, the type of grants that are available and whether they would be met. The approach that we've taken in our demonstration projects is to rely on the private sector to finance the projects and provide the technical support that's necessary, including assistance in obtaining grants and other low-interest loans and incentives to make the projects financially viable. We believe that we can do it on a demonstration scale. Once we've proven it, I think it's going to be much easier to get financing for commercial projects that can be proven to get permitting in Southern California, and that's a major impetus for the demonstration projects.
And in terms of Los Angeles County, what other sites are interested in doing this? In other words, what is the competition out there if Glendale decides to move ahead?
Excellent question. We have, in addition to Glendale, resolutions from three other cities that are interested in partnering with L.A. County. That includes Calabasas, Lancaster, and Long Beach, and those three cities would also be considered. The City of Los Angeles is also moving forward with an independent process that's very similar. They're looking at, including some, one of the technologies they're looking at is also one of our shortlisted companies. But one of my phrases is that there's plenty of ways to go around in L.A. County for multiple projects. We have approximately twelve million tons of trash that needs to be managed on a yearly basis, and so we can easily build a dozen projects in L.A. County and still have waste And so we can easily build a dozen projects in LA County and still have waste going to landfills, believe it or not.
Okay. So my last question is, I'm completely sold on this, and I just want to know when we can get it.
Okay.
So what's the timetable? It sounds like there's a lot of elements that have to come together. So realistically, assuming that we get picked, we get the financing, we deal with all of the other hurdles, the regulatory hurdles, when do we get our waste-to-energy plant operational?
That's an excellent question, and maybe Steve can add to that. But what I wanted to say is, I wanted to thank Steve for bringing this item forward because it'll really help us to create the mechanism for the county and the city to work together on this project.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, just comment on your previous question, and I think Kobe summed it up. I don't even consider we're in competition because of the regional nature of this and what the costs are to transport waste. I think all of us are a great viable option where we're located. And as Kobe said, there's plenty of ways to go around. And the other question is, depending on where we go with the pilot program, and that'll be coming up in Phase Two, we need to, and that's part of what I was going to finish this up with, is us moving to the next step, which is to begin to look at, vet out, talk about contracts, talk about. And one of the questions you had was about the costs, using things like our monies and different things like that. One of the issues we talked about was how can we structure a deal that guarantees us a very competitive tipping fee? So that may be to us what's most important. If we can keep our tipping fee at $30, $35, that's huge. Now, we may have to give up all the byproducts of the process, including the steam and electricity that would be sold to our utility, and then the byproducts of the slag and things that are left over. But we'd be able to lock in, and we're talking 20-, 30-year agreements here, a very reasonable tipping fee. Currently, our tipping fee is just under $40. And you heard Mr. Sky say that the rail haul could be as much as 100. We personally think it might even go higher than that. And if you're thinking about Glendale, you have to think, how do we get the waste to the rail yard? There's one rail spur right now in Whittier, and it's very expensive to put those together. So likely, we'd have to build a transfer station in Glendale and ship the waste to Whittier, then to put it on the train to have it shipped out. So you can see our tipping fee just growing exponentially. So what we want to do now is continue, and I put five bullet points here, is to continue our efforts with the county and hopefully get selected for a pilot program that we can begin to test out how our site works and how the technology works. The other thing that I'm proposing, and I'll be back to you with this as a separate item, is to develop a zero-waste policy and have a zero-waste ordinance in the City of Glendale. This is essentially, nothing goes in a landfill, nothing. We recycle everything we can, we divert everything we can, and what's left over, we put into one of these type of processes. And we generate steam, we generate syn gas to put into electrical generating units. Do we use it for fuel, to boiler fuel to make heat? One of the interesting things I learned was 40% of all the electricity in the United States is used to generate, is used to cool and heat buildings. So if we're able to use some of this to assist us in that, or assist beyond just the City of Glendale, but other entities as well. I'm getting to the final question you had. Right now, our estimated life of Shoal Canyon was between 2020 and 2025. 2020 was the year we were looking at, but we've picked up several years due to the dramatic decrease in tonnage we've experienced over the last three years. For instance, we generate somewhere between 1,500 and 1,700 tons a day. On a normal situation, we've been below 1,000 tons a day in this recessionary period. And this is really based on a complete drop in consumer and commercial waste. This is people buying less and throwing less away. We've seen our recycling programs increase as people aren't throwing anything away that's recyclable and using it to redeem themselves. I know Mr. Starbird had said earlier today, and I hate to contradict my boss, but on construction demolition debris--
We will anyway.
--construction demolition debris is a small, very small part of Shoal. And because, and the reason that is, is because the council passed a CND diversion ordinance, which requires developers to put up a deposit that is, the lesser of 6% of the valuation or $30,000, they have to come back and prove that they've recycled their goods at a certified recycler to get that money back. I'll tell you, when, just two years ago, when our building was, our building that was beginning to slide, we were holding over $1 million in that account. It's a huge incentive for them to do it and to come back and collect their money. So we've seen, what was this, I don't know if I mentioned, about 20% of our waste has dropped tremendously. So what we need to do now, Ms. Friedman, is begin the effort towards serious discussions and serious analysis of what it will take to put a facility in Glendale. We need to look at it from an engineering perspective, we need to look at it from a legal perspective, we need to look at it from a financial perspective, not to mention legislatively what we need to do. So aside from the zero-waste policy, my recommendation was that we have an internal group, water and power, legal, public works, and finance, and that we also, I've asked for $200,000, to retain outside assistance, specific professionals who do this kind of thing from an engineering perspective, lawyers for contract law, financial people to look at what the various options are for us to fund something like this. As I said, very big project, and we want to make sure that we have all our Ts crossed and Is dotted. You all recall the methane gas project we had where, I think, if a little more due diligence on front, by all of us may have, may have made the latter years more palatable. We want to make sure that doesn't happen again here.
So I know I said I didn't have any other questions, but I actually do have one more based on something that you said. Which is, throughout this, and we've talked about this more than once, I've been dealing with your department, which is great, but I want to be sure that GWP is in on these conversations because to me, even though it's a huge amount of startup cost, I would hate to cut our public utilities out of this process completely. And there's something, if we're thinking long-term, there's certainly a benefit, there's an argument to be made, and I don't know if it's the right argument, but there's an argument to be made that we should own this, or at least a large part of it. So I really, I think it's really important that we have GWP's input as we move forward.
Ms. Friedman, I know you've been primarily dealing with me, but rest assured, I've been dealing with GWP, and they're an integral part because they will be the power, the purchaser of the power that comes out of this process. Again, my recommendation is a committee, and I've been dealing with Mr. Steiger. Our agreement is public works will take the lead on it, but we will have water and power right there with us every step of the way. And what I wanted to do was put this internal group augmented by some outside specific and technical experts to help push this along. 2020, 2025 is just around the corner. We do have an expansion process going through now, but even if we put another 10, 15 years on the landfill, something like this is going to take a tremendous amount of time to bring together, and we need to be looking at this right now. This is huge for us. I mean, you can imagine us being able to take care of the waste needs of the City of Glendale, our waste shed cities, and other entities in the county for a long, long time. That's extremely important. Not to mention, we're not landfilling. We've got a green-oriented disposal process, we're creating green energy. It all appears at this point a win-win situation, something I really think we should be pursuing.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero.
I'll make some comments later. I do have some questions, Mr. Sky. I recognize Arrow Ecology and the Interstate Waste Technologies. Are the other two companies there California-based, or where are they?
International Environmental Solutions is a California-based company. Intec is actually based overseas, as are the other two that you're probably familiar with.
Okay. So how many vendors applied, or how many vendors were in contact with your office?
We actually researched hundreds of different companies. We sent out solicitations to as many companies as we could find contact information for as part of our Phase One efforts. We were able to reach a few dozen that sent back information or responded to our questions. And through a very purposeful screening, evaluating, and ranking process, we came to identify these four technologies as the ones that we would recommend for partnership with the County of Los Angeles.
And so when you say screening, you went out for RFQs, RFPs, et cetera?
Yeah, we did a request for qualifications, and we got specific information. We had very stringent minimum criteria for those companies that we would consider, including having an operational facility, that managed material that was essentially solid waste or very similar to solid waste. So without that operational history, they weren't considered for further evaluation. And then we conducted site visits of each of those four companies or those operating facilities to independently verify the information they provided.
Okay. Long Beach, like the City of Glendale, in addition to, suppose they have a landfill, but they have their own utilities. So does Glendale. On the other hand, I don't believe Calabasas has either, their own utility or landfill, the same with Palmdale.
Well, it's interesting that all four cities do have a solid waste facility of some form. Calabasas has a landfill that's just outside the city, it's in the unincorporated areas. They consider it their home turf, I guess. Lancaster as well has a landfill. I believe that you're the only city with its own independent electricity utility because Long Beach is within Edison, I believe the others are as well.
Oh, well, that's even more interesting. Because to me, it seems to me Glendale should be one of your prime locations because we do have both. I didn't realize that--
I made a unique feature, Long Beach owns its own gas distribution system. They buy their gas, wholesale, and distribute gas.
That's what it is. They have their own gas distribution, but not utility. But at any rate, okay, that was the only questions I have.
Thank you.
Well, that's where we're ready. Okay. I have a card. Why don't we take a speaker, Mr. Milano?
Good evening, Mayor, adjutant members of the city council, city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. For a long time, I have been a strong proponent of any measures that will turn into, to turn trash into other types of means where it will not wind up at the landfill. I was looking at the 2001 CAFR and statements made in the management discussion and analysis. And in 2001, the expected life of the landfill at Shoal Canyon was 18 years. So we're approximating 10 years, we should have about eight years left unless it's been expanded somehow. But I've, but I know that these type of technologies are really essential for a city to be able to grow and maintain any type of growth in the future because it becomes a constraining factor of growth once you basically are topping out the landfill. Personally, I can tell you that my experience with my apartment building in trying to get tenants to recycle has had some measure of success. We were able to reduce at least the regular trash by 50%, but there's so much more that we can do. And personally, at my own home, we reduced the actual trash that goes with a regular disposal to barely at the bottom of a barrel per week because we're able to recycle effectively the rest of it. And I think that there's a lot of room for recycling that takes place, but this will be like the topping of the cake. But there's a problem in Glendale. It is that you depend on revenues coming in from the refuse disposal fund to fill in your general fund, and you have for a long, long time. And I think you need to win the general fund away from this so that you can have your options more open. Because if you are dependent on money coming in from the landfill and landfill operations, then you'd be pretty much reluctant to basically move in that direction. The city had $19 million in charges for services for waste disposal, according to the CAFR for 2009. And it had a net operating income of $3.6 million. Now, out of that, only half a million went to the general fund, but throughout the years, we had several million dollars moving to the general fund. But I think that if you are going to consider this, and I hope you do, to move in this direction, to make Glendale self-sustaining with regard to the use of the redirection of waste, that you move, you know, completely towards it, but you can take a look at figuring out how you can win yourself out of these particular monies that is coming to the general fund as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards on that. Mr. Quintero.
There is a former mayor and JPL employee who talked to me about this issue, I don't know, I want to say 20 years ago. I see, 32 years ago, I stand corrected. He doesn't want to make any comments? I assumed he was--
I'd like him to. Why don't you come forward, Mr. Mayor, Carl Raggio.
Just to give you a little bit of history of it, I was impressed by a facility back at Langley NASA, 1978, that just went up. And at that time, the cost of fuel to drive the wind tunnels was exorbitant. So they came up with a concept of waste energy, and very successful, meeting all EPA requirements. That is still an operation in use today, meeting all new EPA requirements. And the byproduct was interesting, I thought, at that time, and that is a grit, it's just a simple grit. But along with the pollution standpoint, it's used for black ice back at Hampton Roads, which is adjacent to that. The facility now takes into consideration not only Langley NASA, but Langley Air Force Base, as well as the City of Hampton. So it has been something that has been old technology for a long time. I'm very much interested in the new approaches, and I think JPL has been interested in this for some time too. And I know that the direction of JPL with respect to the future is one that lends itself more to solutions associated with Earth as opposed to all space endeavors. And I think this is good. I think this is a healthy thing because the people who work there are very much interested in what happens here. So I thank you for bringing me up, and I'm excited about this. I very frankly think that the opportunities here are beyond what everyone can think at the present time. I'm fully aware that Steve has mentioned that it's a long-time effort. It's something that's going to take dedication on future councils to maintain this because the process will be somewhat slow. But by the same token, I think it's something that takes an awful lot in the way of imagination and dedication to the incorporation of a facility like this. So I encourage you, all of you, and as I'm sure you're going to, to do whatever you can to see it come. And thank you, Frank, for having the gray hair and the memory.
Thank you, Mr. Raggio. Mr. Weaver.
Frank beat me to it. I was going to state, I too had talked to Carl recently about it. Some 20 years ago, I chaired an Integrated Waste Subcommittee for then council, I think. Carl Raggio was on the council at the time that I chaired a very large committee. We went all over looking at works and other potential ways to divert waste. And we made our report and so on, and it's in essence languished for some 20 years. I'm glad to see that with the new technology and it's now there, that it can happen. Our belief was, we own the landfill, we'll own the plant or whatever facility is eventually put up there, and we will own the revenue that comes in because the other cities are going to have to come to us. And we'll exert a nice, healthy fee out of it rather than going by rail out to the desert. So it's a moneymaker for us. It's going to cost a lot of money to get to that point, but I just hope we can keep the foot to the pedal this time and not let it languish another 20 years like it's done. I doubt that's going to happen this time.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Friedman.
I have nothing to add. We've heard from the Greenies on the dais, and we've heard from the historian to my left, and we've heard from Mr. Sky, who, his presentation tonight was every bit as terrific as it was the last time you were here. And I think I had just been elected at that time, so it was quite an eye-opener at that time. This was just as good. I'm obviously very supportive of this and will be voting to support this.
Mr. Quintero.
Well, as it turns out, I was a teenager when I first thought this was a good idea. It was 32 years ago. Could have sworn it was 20. But I remember that exact conversation and just the idea that it was at Langley and associated with NASA and so forth. I thought, gee, well, then that means that it's right around the corner. Probably just in a few years, we'll all be doing this. Didn't work out that way. But actually, it didn't work out that way in the United States because it's-- But actually, it didn't work out that way in the United States because it's certainly being used in Western Europe. I noticed one of the companies is from Israel and in Japan, et cetera. So, the rest of the world is very much involved in these technologies. One of the comments I want to make is that I'm very happy that the county of LA is pursuing this, continues to make progress. And obviously, Mr. Sky is very, very much on top of the program. However, I do think we need to follow, as a city, we need to follow a parallel track. I think we need to go in our direction, and perhaps it will work out with the county of Los Angeles, and we will partner with them. However, we need to push in our, to see what's in our best interest. Because in looking at the staff report, I very much like the concept, and Mr. Starbird and I have talked about it in the past. I mean, we have Pasadena, we have Sierra Madre, San Marino, La Cañada, even the unincorporated portion of La Crisena. So, we have our own basin, so to speak, that we can work with and partner with. So, I'm very much in favor of, like I say, pursuing a dual, kind of a dual emphasis, working with the county and just continuing on our own. And to that effect, in terms of whatever consultant we decide on, and I assume you'll be going out for an RFP and so forth, I think that consultant has to be one technology-neutral. And more specifically, we need to look into the background of whoever we hire to make sure that it is an independent assessment and not someone that's tied to companies, be they waste management companies or technology companies, infrastructure companies, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think that is very important. And Mr. Zern is nodding his head, so it's obviously something that you've thought about. But overall, this is very, very exciting. I'm looking forward. I hope the staff can really pursue this as quickly as possible. While I was in Hawaii on a conference, I took the time to visit a site where Hawaii has tremendous issues. I mean, the press, they actually talked about barges, putting their garbage on barges. When I heard that, I thought, oh, boy, they're going to go dump it somewhere else in the South Pacific. And in fact, they were talking about those barges, taking them to the state of Washington. Can you imagine taking them across the Pacific in order to dump it? So, they have major issues. Well, I visited a site where they actually showed us a Japanese company somewhere in Tokyo. I don't know the name of the company or anything else, but it was a very nice suburb of Tokyo. And you could tell by the surrounding buildings. And there in the middle of this suburb was a plant where they were bringing in, separating. It was all covered. And so, it's something that can be done, without question. There's no reason that we have to wait any longer. We need to pursue it. So, I'm very happy to receive the report.
Okay. I have a couple of comments, and we'll go another way around. I would like to, obviously, I'm fully in support of this, but I would like to offer an amendment to 8E1 to, with regard to the project team, to invite Mayor Raggio, to invite a member of JPL at the discretion of its director, Dr. Charles Alachi, and to invite the director of the Occidental College Urban Environmental Planning Institute for a seat. And it can be a non-voting seat, but I think the broader impact, the broader input we have, the better. We've got the scientists, we've got the experience, we've got the educators.
Now, you're going to put a tiger in the tank. And you know what I'm saying. It's the Occidental mascot.
Other comment, then?
Okay. Let me go to Mr. Weaver and then.
That was one of the ideas that came out of the committee I was on 20 years ago, to form, to build a campus up there to study exactly what the county is doing now. Because we have plenty of room up on the site. Of course, it languished for 20 years. The other thing I was thinking, and if this, if we can build this plant, everything up there, we can invite the city of Los Angeles to bring some of their waste product back up to our landfill for a price, right? Since we shut them out.
Charge those tipping fees. Mr. Starbird.
A couple of comments, Mr. Mayor. One, I guess, contrary to Mr. Milano's observation, as I mentioned this morning during our budget discussion, I really think this technology, the landfill, has a potential for actually generating revenue. In addition to providing capacity for our community at competitive rates, it also holds the opportunity to produce revenue beyond its own operations and maintenance forever, which can be a resource for either supporting our capital improvement program or operating programs of general fund. The second point is, there's a second aspect to this discussion, and that is the permanent long-term maintenance of our landfill. You recall that GWP purchased the existing methane gas recovery contract. And there are emerging technologies on ways to utilize methane gas off of landfills. So, in addition to the disposal, there's also the forever aspect, that we're going to have this landfill that needs to be maintained, will produce methane gas, could take well beyond 100-plus years to quit producing methane, and there's an opportunity there. And there are some real state-of-the-art emerging technologies utilizing fuel cells and methane gas and fuel cells to directly produce electricity that GWP is already beginning to explore. So, this partnership has to exist between Public Works and GWP for both the disposal of waste and how you can convert that, to reduce the deposit in the landfill and extend its life, but also to produce energy from that in a cost-effective manner. And then, secondly, how we maintain the landfill long-term because it's going to be there virtually forever and will need to be maintained. And it will continue to produce what, at least to date, has been viewed as a negative byproduct. I think in time will have a, be a positive byproduct that can be seen as an asset in the community as opposed to something negative that you have to maintain after you've consumed its use. I think there's an opportunity, long-term, for this to be viewed as an asset that can go on for a long, long time, producing resources for the community in addition to a place to dispose. So, we have to marry those two together, and this team will include that. Lastly, my suggestion is if you want to invite people to the team, let's create an advisory group that can work with whatever in-house technical group gets pulled together because you have everything from the technology to long-term financing, operational implications in an area that the technology is moving along rather rapidly. Lastly, if I can, maybe just a question for Mr. Sky. And this is a question that's come to my mind quite a bit. The relationship between the county and the sanitation districts?
Sure. The county sanitation district is an independent governmental organization. The Board of Supervisors is one vote on the Board of Governors.
Okay. So, county Public Works is not related to the county sanitation districts?
Indirectly related. They're independent agencies.
Okay. So, the interest the county sanitation districts has in the waste by rail doesn't come in or influence the work that you're doing in looking at these technologies?
Correct. Actually, the county established the permit requirement for the sanitation districts to develop the waste by rail system as a part of the Pointe Hills landfill when I got that permit.
Right.
So, we actually have a regulatory role rather than.
And the date for the closure of Pointe Hills now?
November 2013.
2013. You will see the dynamics in the waste industry in Los Angeles County change dramatically when Pointe Hills landfill closes in just three short years, then, dramatically. And the economics will change dramatically at that time, too.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion now?
Let me just clarify Mr. Starbird's suggestion.
Yeah.
Mr. Starbird, you're suggesting, then, rather than, I mentioned a few possible participants, rather than place them on the project team, create an advisory board with such members.
There may be others that you'll want to add to that.
Okay.
Members of the council, that was our original plan. I didn't make that clear. The project team is our in-house group, and we were looking at community meetings, a team of, a panel of experts. Absolutely.
But if you want to have, I call it an advisory group.
Yep.
That will tag along and be more close to the work that we're doing, I think that would be the way to do that.
Perhaps that's better.
Absolutely.
So, do we need an amendment to the motion to do that or just give direction? That's what we'll do.
You can do either, Mr. Mayor. You can add to the motion, just that in addition to the creation of the project team, that they, the city manager, establish an advisory committee to work with the project team.
I'll make that motion, but I want to make sure Carl Raggio is involved in it.
Is invited.
If he wants to.
We'll extend an invitation.
You've got nothing to do.
We have to note for free.
He may have to get permission.
Yes, for free. But you've got some time, haven't you? You're free. You can do it.
We'll extend the official invitation.
And can I ask a question, too? The question is, Mr. Zern had mentioned, I don't know if you had suggested that we at some point pass a resolution to become waste-neutral? Was that the term you used?
Zero waste.
Zero waste. So, is that, does that come back to us at a certain point in the resolution?
Oh, yeah. Because that has huge implications.
It's under development right now.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's a resolution. It doesn't mean that it would start the day of. It was, it's a goal, right?
It's a goal, and it has different phases, many of which we've already accomplished. But it is maximizing your recycling efforts and just continuing to minimize your landfill deposits to the point that you no longer deposit anything in a landfill.
Okay. All right. So, did you make a motion? I'll second it. Okay.
You're hooked.
And, okay, with that motion and a second incorporating the amendment with the advisory.
Is that for both the resolution and the?
The appropriation of $200,000.
Yeah, I can do the two also.
So, one and two.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Welcome to the team, Carl.
If he accepts, if he accepts. Okay.
Drafted.
You need, you have to come.
Come on forward, Mr. Sky.
Although we can hear you, they can't get a little.
Yeah. I just wanted to add that I believe firmly the Board of Supervisors shares your enthusiasm on this project. There was a motion by Supervisor Yaroslavsky that was unanimously carried to direct us to accelerate our work to develop projects in LA County and specifically mentioning Glendale and the other three cities as at the top of the list. So, we're very much looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you very much.
Just maybe, tell them what Mr. Quintero mentioned. We have our own utilities. We have our own landfill. Nobody else does.
That's true.
Our own Public Works trucks, et cetera.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Where were we?
Going to the next slide.
Okay. Number nine, please.
Under hearings, at 90, is Director of Community Planning regarding proposed fees for Community Planning Department Building and Safety Division and Planning Division. At 91, is a resolution adopting revised fees.
This is a public hearing, and I'd like to open the public hearing. I don't have any cards on this. I will close the public hearing. This is a modest increase in the planning fees. Mr. Hagani.
It's a modest increase in the building and safety fees, and it's a correction of some of the fees that you adopted earlier for planning, but the resolution, three or four of the fees were, had the wrong numbers. So, this is a correction of those. Mr. Stewart Tom is here to answer any questions you may have about the building and safety fees.
I don't know if we have any questions.
The only question I have for Mr. Tom is what in the world did you do to yourself? We're on crutches.
Snowboarding?
Is this your jogging regimen?
Yeah. Oh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I was skiing, and I actually took a break. I was 200 feet from the door of the cafeteria. I was going to meet my dad for lunch, and I just wasn't paying attention, and I tripped and fell. So, it's not glamorous. The good news is it's all just muscle, and it will heal on its own. But with respect to the matter at hand, as Mr. Hagani has indicated, these are really just slight adjustments to fees in our resolution to make sure that we are adequately doing cost recovery. I would like to draw to your attention that in addition to the 4% increase, we specifically targeted three areas to make sure that we are responsibly recovering fees, and those are in three areas. Number one has to do with a surcharge related to energy conservation. The state's regulations on energy conservation have gotten more complex, and we do have to spend more time reviewing plans and inspecting buildings. And as a result, our costs have gone up. So, we are slightly increasing that surcharge. In addition to that, the second one is our disabled access. And due to Senate Bill 1608, we are required to spend more time reviewing plans, inspecting buildings. So, we are increasing the, we're proposing to increase the surcharge there. And then, the good news is to be responsible with green building, we are introducing a surcharge to make sure that we recover the costs to have sustainable building in the city of Glendale. And with that, if you have any questions, I would be happy to address the individual changes or anything at large. Very good.
I think we have any questions. Pretty straightforward.
Thank you.
I'll close the public hearing and take the roll call.
We need a motion and a second.
So moved.
I'm ahead of myself. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Now, I'll take the roll call.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Weaver. Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item brings us back to oral communications, item number six, where discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision, and city manager, mayor, refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you, Charles Hooker, followed by Mike Mohill.
My name is Charles Hooker, and I would like to thank Dave Weaver, being a member of the council and a former mayor, being the only one that opposes something that is not needed in Glendale, and that is this city lights. And I cannot understand how these other people on the city council can vote for something like that. I know they try to keep it out of Montrose and are, where I live, in the Pardugo Woodlands, and they wish it off on some other poor area that is overcrowded, and there's no room for anything. But it's going to look like Glendale, the circus came to town with the way that this building is designed. And it's, I don't know what they're planning on doing for parking. Glendale downtown area is already strapped for parking, and city, they want to take that one parking lot away. You've got different events, especially for the seafood restaurant, and you've got the Alex Theater, and especially around Christmas time, where are you going to put all the cars? Especially when you've got all of these vehicles, the people have three cars, they park one in their little place that they have to park, and then you've got two more on the street. I don't think that city council, the other members, thought about that, or else they closed their eyes to that. And I'm really surprised, but I'm proud of Dave Weaver for being a man that thinks. Thank you.
Mike Mohill. Margaret Hammond, followed by Herbert Milano.
Evening, Your Honor. Mayor Madarian, members of the city council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. I happen to agree also with Mr. Weaver on the city lights project. The colors, I think, are outrageous. I think it's just horrendous that you would want to put that type of housing in our city. As I've already said, all you have to do is look at the housing down on South Bryan at San Fernando Road. I mean, I think if you look at the colors, all you've got to do is go over and look at the in and out. That's the colors that, to me, it's going to come out. And I think that's horrendous. Are they going to be serving hamburgers and hot dogs out of that project? Anyway, I just don't understand why you have to have, when you have the low income, which, whatever, and then turn around and make it look cheap and cheesy with those type of colors. And that's my opinion on it. And the 710 tunnel, I'm glad we do have someone on our city council that is really involved in the battle or the idea of what are we going to get out of this tunnel? Bad health, bad traffic, ruining our neighborhoods, especially if it came out at the Rose Bowl, I mean, which is one of our city, not just Glendale or Pasadena, is known all over the I mean, which is one of our city, not just Glendale or Pasadena, is known all over the world. Beautiful area there of that, where that Rose Bowl is located. As you drive it on that bridge that goes over there, I mean, it is a beautiful area. And to even think about having the tunnel in there is just like a stupid thing you ever heard of. And now, my other thing is about the population, which over and over is 39 or 40% of the population of Glendale is in a very small area that's called Number One. And I'd like to know the square acreage of what that Number One area is as to Number Two, Three, or Four, because it seems like we have to put up with the influx, and there will be even more when they let a lot of the criminals out of prison, that coming across the borders into Glendale. Where the Number One area is surrounded completely by Los Angeles, and there's always trouble with the police chasing the people from Los Angeles over into Glendale, particularly in the area that I live in. And I just think we need more police presence. We have a lot of problems, and it's -- I know that the police are shorthanded. I have no fault to find with them. They do the best they can with what they've got. But again, the huge population of the area in that small district is unbelievable, and what we have to put up with, with traffic problems, particularly in my street, and I've asked for before, and I'm going -- we're going back about it. The cars coming off of Las Feliz and making a left turn up Glendale and right -- and then make the -- another turn right onto Cypress. Speed one after the other, morning, every morning and every night. I can't even get in and out of my car if I park on the street for the traffic, because the streets are narrow anyway. You only park on one side, and then you can barely pass anybody that's coming or going either way. And that much traffic is just too much. They have found out that it's a shortcut rather than going up to Chevy Chase. They take the shortcut on Cypress and go over to Eagle Rock or go the other way, cut up, and go up Chevy Chase that way. So I do think we need to have a look at it. We need either speed bump, some kind of control on the traffic that's on that street. And aside from that, I think it's a health hazard for anybody that wants to live there. You can't even cross the street to go across the street to your neighbors. You have to make sure you hear and listen for the traffic coming, or you might end up being a statistic. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. Herbert Milano, followed by Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mayor Ajarian. I have a presentation there. This is Glendale wages, if Mr. McPhaul can help me out. I'd like to start first with what I think is one of the better approaches to the budget that I've seen in some time. In the budget preparation or in the budget discussion process that you have, there is a report that is new, at least it's new to me here. It's called the Summary of Appropriations by Department by Fund. And I have an example of it here that I suggest you all really take a close look at. It basically takes the departments and tells you where the funds are, and they're all consolidated pretty much by department. Now, this particular report gives you actuals for 2007, 2008, and then the revised budget. My suggestion is that you request a similar report, but for actuals going back 10 years. Because if you do that, you'll get a better overview of what is happening to the budgets of the various different departments, and allows you to be able to assess the growth of various different departments. Because we don't have the budget summary as we used to that allows us to basically take a look at the trends in salaries and benefits and MNO and capital improvements. And I think that you need to do that, because this is the report that you should be going after in evaluating this year's budget. You've got to look -- take a look at the CAFR and all of the actuals going back the last 10 years. What I'd like to present to you is a compilation of the Glendale wages and salary trends from the year 2000, as reported on the federal form W-3. Mr. McPhaul, if you can help me out. What I've done is I compiled the information from the W-3, which is the summary submittal of the W-2s. And as you notice, you have the salaries plus the little section up above, which is the deferred wages generally by the safety personnel, which is money that they will get later once they retire. But basically, the city has -- is a commitment to that particular amount, and I think it finally goes into the treasury. I don't have the figure for 2006, because the report probably was incomplete. But you notice there's a trend from $100 million to upwards of about $150 million with a very slight decline for 2009. May I have the next one, please? What I have here is the same information on a different scale, but it includes not just the deferred wages, but it also includes unemployment, it includes medical, and includes other employee compensations. And you notice that it starts from roughly $118 million in the year 2000 to upwards of about $210 million for 2009. That information basically comes from the W-3s and all of the CAFRs going back to the year 2000. Now, we can quibble whether all of the amounts of those particular operational expenses for those benefits are fully paid for by the city or not. You just need to know what the trends are. And you notice that the trend, you know, is a fairly exponential trend, that there are no reductions. It is a continually growing burden on the city. And if you were to plot on the very same chart the situation with regard to regular civilian wages, not city employees, you'll see it up and down, going all over the place, primarily going down when it comes to real wages for those of us who have to pay the taxes, right, to be able to support this kind of growth. And this is having a significant impact. I have another chart with regard to the pension obligations, but this is where you actually need to make the focus to control this growth. Otherwise, there really won't be much for us giving the revenues that are being limited with regard to property tax and sales taxes, which really reflect the current economic conditions for the rest of us. May I have the last one, please? And so here is a summary of basically where we are. Inflation rate at roughly 25%. Population increase about 3.5%. The combined of the two is about 25.5%. But if you take a look at the payroll increase, just straight out, it's 50%. Pension increase of 284, medical insurance expenses of 500, and the payroll benefit increase of around 72% altogether, when you combine the two. I've got all the data to corroborate these numbers. But what I'm saying is that as you prepare to look at the budget, you have to take a look at the areas that have the highest increases and look at the trends of what has occurred department by department to give you a framework. Because just looking at the general fund is not going to give you a full picture. And looking at the way the budget is prepared, which is basically, you know, if you were to take, for example, police, it's all minced out in such a way that you don't have a really comprehensive look at salaries separately, wages, benefits separately, or pensions and medical separately. You need to be able to get a report that allows you to see the trends of what is taking place with regard to these controls. Now, I know where the influences are, but I'm telling you right now that the general population is having a hell of a time trying to meet currently the continuing burden that we feel with regard to the increased fees that we have to pay and increased rates that we have to pay with regard to electricity and other services. So I appeal to you to take a look at the budget in a different way, and I have copies of this that I can send you by email. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mohill, final speaker.
Mike Mohill, long-term resident. I don't have a PowerPoint. I'm not that sophisticated. But I have something, I think, as close as possible about wages and compensation for the different city managers in the area of California. In the city of Glendale, the city manager makes $251,000, and the population here in Glendale is only about $200,000. Can the people in the audience see that? I hope so. The city manager, Long Beach, population almost 500,000 -- 500 people, 500,000 probably, makes $235,000, and he's responsible for the port of Long Beach, one of the busiest ports in the world, in manufacturing, major manufacturing, major retail, and he's only making $235,000. The city of Anaheim, population 348,000, he's compensated $250,000. The city of Fresno, population 189,000--
No.
Excuse me, 495,000, and his income is 189,000. And the city of San Diego, population 1.3 million, he only gets $250,000, the same thing as our city manager. Is there something wrong with these numbers? Now, we talk about charts and comparisons. Now, maybe you have another chart to show me that our city manager is being paid either fairly or over. We don't make this kind of money. Why do we need to pay? Is this the best that money can buy, is what I want to ask. Okay? In 2008, the city manager and the staff recommended that we approve an unbalanced budget. We know what happened then. We had to slash the budget by $9 million. The next year, in 2009, also he recommended you approve an unbalanced budget, and again, slashed. And here we are in 2010. Is this the best that money can buy? I ask you. Maybe we had a look -- you know, someone says to me, gee, where does he get this money? Who pays him? Who sets the salary? I said, well, to be honest with you, it's the five people in front of me right now. The city council sets these wages, unless I know something wrong. So now that we're talking about budget and salaries and compensation for all the city employees, why don't we look at the city manager and ask him, what are you going to be doing different this year than last year? For the last two years, you've given us an unbalanced -- you recommended, pardon me, an unbalanced budget. There are other numbers I could present. Now, Mr. Weaver says, oh, in comparison to other cities, da-da-da-da. Well, again, bring me your comparisons, because you know what? They're not available in the city clerk's office, okay? Or they're in the attorney's office. And you use your -- I went and got some comparison numbers. You may not like them, but these are the comparison that the folks back home who have to pay the bills, the average citizen of Glendale makes about 300 -- excuse me, $50,000. We have 15% of the population on social security. This picture doesn't look right to me. And I hope the citizens of Glendale remember when it's time to vote next year, they think of the council people who helped contribute to this kind of number. Maybe we can make a change.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. Mr. Weaver? Mr. Ragio?
I didn't present. I just want to extend to the council and the staff. Thank you. And that is that, as I mentioned before, I think you're embroiled on something that's going to be a great savings to the city, but also will put us in a leadership position. And just to correct one thing, Frank, it wasn't 32 years ago I spoke to you. You didn't have gray hair then. But it was, I made a presentation to the council at that time on this very subject. It was when you were chamber president that I took the time to spend. So thank you again, and I'm just as pleased as I can be with respect to your actions tonight. And I thought it might be nice to end on a good bird.
We're not done.
It's always a treat. Thank you. Mr. Weaver?
Mr. Mohill, I did not get the top 100 sellers of city managers anywhere in the city. It was posted online. It was sent to me. And if I had known you were going to talk on tonight, I would have gone through my files and found that one sheet of paper somewhere. But our city manager is one of the lowest-paid city managers in the state of California. And no, he did not present to us an unbalanced budget. By charter, it has to be balanced. You should know that if you read the charter. You know, you come in here and you insult our city manager. I cast the deciding vote to bring this gentleman to this city in '97, and I'm damn proud of it. And you continue to get up and belittle this gentleman who does not deserve that. You want some of us out? Oh, Mr. Draymond and me out so you can get the right people on to fire him? Ha-ha. It ain't going to happen. I don't know who you're listening to, but why don't you go get your facts rather than getting up here and throwing out crap? Just get really tired of it. Quit picking on our city manager. We have one of the best city governments in the state of California. You read the paper, you know it. You have some ulterior motive to try to get this city manager out of here. It ain't going to work, not as long as I'm around. Secondly, I want to clear the record. You two, I voted against that project on Salem because I didn't like the hideous colors and two mature oak trees in a 200-foot-wide lot they couldn't design to save those two oak trees. Now they're going to be torn down. There's plenty of open space for the kids. Parking, I think there's probably adequate there and a lot to the east of it. If it isn't, the neighbors down there can come in and ask for preferential parking. And they'll work their way around. You can either pay valet or whatever. But I did not vote against the project for anything other than the reasons they gave you. Color and design a building that causes two mature oak trees to be torn down. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Mr. Mohill.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. I don't believe there are any other comments or response.
I've had enough for one night.
That being the case, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We're adjourned.